Are you seeing it seven o'clock? I'd like to call a meeting order. We stand to be late. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda tonight is to approve the minutes from May 12th, 2025, and May 27th, 2025, regular meetings, and the May 29th, 2025, policy subcommittee meetings. I could take a motion for all of them or one at a time, however the board chooses.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 12th, 2025, and May 27th, 2025, regular meetings, and the May 29th, 2025, policy subcommittee meeting.
Okay, we have a motion from Lynn. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second from John Welsh. All those in, any discussion on it?
No.
All those in favor of accepting it signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Any additions to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the Communications Committee.
Hey Drew.
To add a social media board of ed account for informational purposes. It's something we've been discussing within our committee.
Okay, I'll put that under item. Well, I guess first thing we have to do is, you made that motion, we need a second, and we need two-thirds of the board to add something to the agenda. So do we have a second for that?
I have a second.
At least of the second.
If it's just for information only, can it go into committee reports?
He's got, he has an action item. They have an action. They have an action.
Information only, sorry.
He's gonna talk about it in committee, but there's gonna be an action item.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion on it? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds? Abstentions? Motion carried, so we'll put it item five under recommended actions.
Five E.
Five E. Approve social media communications. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I move down to item one C. Good evening. Comments from visitors regarding agenda items. We have comments from visitors. Thank you for coming tonight. Item two, Chairperson's Report. I'd just like to report to the board, I did talk to our cave representative today for our superintendent search is well underway. The meetings have been going on last week and this week with the community of focus groups, and we're hoping to continue along with that process. Mary is recovering from a quick bout of an illness, and she's back, back on track this week. Number two, I'm sorry to miss my first graduation in 35 years this week. I'm happy that Amanda will say a few congratulatory remarks from the board to the graduates on my behalf, on our behalf. Next item, we received correspondence from the EGA president. I'll defer to Missy to communicate with the EGA president about the progress in all the concerned areas. Next item, I'd like to, I was invited last week to a middle school activity. I'd like to thank the student government, the East Granby Youth Services, especially Alicia Van Neal, who helped put that all together, the school administration, school staff, and I hope I said, did I say the student government? They were the ones who started the whole thing, and certainly it wouldn't have worked without all the parent volunteers that got organized for the community field day at the middle school last week.
And I think Youth Action Council?
What's that?
I think Youth Action Council was.
Oh, I didn't say Youth, I have it here, let's see. All right, I got EG Youth, Youth Services, I said. It's Action Council, the Youth Services. My mistake. Okay, and that's the end of my report. Item four, committee reports. Do we have any reports from Policy Committee?
Did we just go over the superintendent's?
Oh, yes, I did. I look at all my notes.
I'm already gone.
Notice, notice, Missy didn't vote for me. I'm sorry, read all my notes here. Item four. Item three, superintendent's report, sorry, Missy.
That's okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
I'm gonna roll.
Item three, A, Personnel Update. I have two resignations to report. Both are members of our paraprofessional unit. Ms. Cindy Williams, whom many of our community know very well, she was hired in East Granby in 2013, so she's been here for quite some time. And I know a lot of our community members know her also for the work that she does with dance and our young ones in town. So Cindy has been instrumental in supporting our youngest learners, particularly in the area of reading support, working alongside of our reading specialists. So she has, she is retiring.
For sending.
So the second person is Sophie Lebec. Sophie is a relatively newer paraprofessional in district. She's been with us since 2023. She actually gave a lot of credit to our district and the professionals and the children and the parents that she works with to help her kind of move along in her professional career. So she's actually moving on with kind of her experience and realizing what she's really good at, working with children, and is pursuing a different pathway at this point. So we thank, of course, we wish Cindy the best in her retirement, and we wish Sophie the best in her, her next endeavors.
Congratulations to both of them. You're wisdom.
Yeah, I'm just gonna kind of little tangent note, I speak often to whether it's teachers, paras, who might have worked in another district and really didn't have great experiences and weren't sure about their career in education. And then they've worked here, and they are reinvigorated and realize that, you know, sometimes it does take a different experience. And, and it's not just one or two, it's, it's been quite a few that have shared kind of their enjoyment in this community, you know, with the families and the children and the, just the professionalism in town, to bring back their, and remember their, kind of their love and their passion in education, so.
That's wonderful to hear.
Okay, item three B, High School Roof Update. In our Board of Educational Capital Plan, we do have a roof update. Now, this is the 2001 portion of the roof, which is, if you walk into the high school, it's the area over the new gym. So this was the renovation, okay? When we redid our roof, geez, three, four years ago now, this was not part of the renovation. However, it has come to time where we do need to replace that roof over the last few years. With the help of Mr. Carlson, we have done some repairs that have kept us dry, I'll say. This is in our capital plan for '26, '27. So it's really important during the next school year, we work to get everything in order for that project. I did send a message to first select person, asking her to convene, whether it's a subcommittee of the school town building committee or the school town building committee itself, to look at a, to start the process, so that we will be ready for, for the roof project a year from now, okay?
Missy, if I could just add something to the board about the roof update.
Sure.
Just so board members know, because I know there's some community question on it, I had a question is, why didn't we replace the roof a few years ago? Because it was on the new addition, it has to be 20 years before there's any state reimbursement. So we did the rest of the building, knowing that we could wait till that was this old so that we could then fix it. So that's, that's the reason for it. It wasn't, it wasn't an oversight. It was, it would have been an awful lot of money if it was done at that time. So it's been in a five-year plan, and it's coming up for this year, and we'll have that fixed.
And what, I'm sorry, what funding level do we have as a place holder?
I believe, now, we, we budgeted this some time ago, I believe it's 2.1 million.
Yeah, okay.
There's a capital.
Yeah? Okay.
Which, again, I'm sorry for interrupting, why it's important we start now, because we'll need a new, you know, budget amount when we actually go to capital.
We'll need to go out the bit again.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, item three C, the HVAC update, heating ventilation unit, this is at the middle school, high school. I was not able to attend the last subcommittee meeting, so I'm going to read the update from the building committee with the, provided by Mr. Carlson. Town facilities of Ray Carlson reported that the project is running slightly ahead of schedule, and the project is on budget. Mr. Carlson stated that the job is progressing with four cabinet unit heaters left to install, along with the final connections and some control work. Work is scheduled for the summer break with a completion date by the end of July. Finishing work such as floor repairs will also be complete by the end of July. Chairman Hayden thanked Mr. Carlson for his work on this project. Mr. Carlson also mentioned that the town maintains the laptop that controls the HVAC at all three schools for greater transparency and control. We've also added some indoor monitors to meet the new standards under indoor air quality for fresh air mixing. And we did receive, and this might be in, in your report also, Mrs. Heine, but you can mention it again, we did, the town did receive $269,590 reimbursement on June 4th. So the way reimbursement works, when we have grant funded through the state, and of course, we had to apply for all of this, Mrs. Heine and I, once we received the bulk, we submitted the reimbursable cost to the state, and we did receive this first, the town received the first reimbursement. When the project is complete, we will submit any final costs for the, a second reimbursement check. So we are very, very happy with that.
Okay. And Mr. Carlson is here tonight. If any board members have any questions beyond what Missy's given us. I, I only have one comment. Mr. Carlson, you're here tonight, you don't know how much we thank you for what you do for the Board of Education.
Thanks.
And for the town of East Granby.
Appreciate you.
We appreciate you. We appreciate it. Okay, moving down to committee reports. Policy Committee.
Yeah, we've made a lot of progress this year on the Policy Committee. I think we've done, we've now checked all of Shipman and Goodwin's policies, and with a lot of help from Lisa Klein and Missy behind the scenes, I think we've got a good package now that we can read through. So I, I mean, I haven't talked to you about it, Missy, but I think maybe as a policy subcommittee, we should do a first read-through.
After graduation.
After graduation. After graduation. And then we will bring it to the larger board and with the recommendation. And we're, we're hoping to have a whole new slate of policies in effect for the beginning of the 2025, '26 school year.
Absolutely. And thank you for the Policy Committee. This has been a massive, massive undertaking.
A lot of policies you went through.
What was that?
A lot of policies you guys went through.
Yes, we did. We did.
Cheese and crackers.
Cheese and crackers, yeah. Yep. Every season. We worked through every season. All right. Thank you, Policy Subcommittee.
Okay, item four B, I'm not sure if we have any update now. We're at the end of the year, coming close to the end of the year, whether anyone from the board or Mary has anything want to add at this time, or wait till finishing up the year? Okay, item C, Curriculum.
For the curriculum report, the, probably the most important thing that people should know is that we will be having a virtual meeting this Thursday.
Yep.
At six?
Five.
Five, at 5:00 PM, and that will, that will be released on the agenda there. Specifically, we asked Mrs. Light to share some more details about high school curriculum courses that are offered online, what's being offered and what circumstances those classes are being offered and to what students they might be available, just to have a bigger picture, because that's been a question that we've had. But they also, in the past month, the Professional Development and Evaluation Committee, the PDEC Committee, meets twice a year, and most recently, they met on May 19th. And that is composed of the curriculum leaders from the elementary and secondary departments and school administrators, and they talk about their professional learning goals, their outcomes, their evaluation procedures in the actual curriculum. So they have that long report about all the wonderful things that are going on with teacher education and evaluation. And additionally, we want to note that East Granby High School has been granted permission to teach two classes through, this is two more classes, through UConn's ECE program, which is the Early College Experience Program, which has previously been discussed. These classes are the ECE Medical Terminology and the ECE Mathematics for Business and Economics. And Mrs. Light is working with the teachers to create the curricula based upon the syllabus requirements for each program, and will present them to the board this summer. And for anybody that's not aware with what the ECE classes are, some people might be more familiar with the AP classes, where students can take those and take one test at the end of the year so that they can try and get college credits. But the ECE program is more geared towards the whole picture of the entire year of instruction, and those classes are based on the curriculum endorsed by the University of Connecticut, and students will receive UConn credits when they successfully complete those classes, and then they could be applied as transfer credits to other colleges from that.
Without having to score out on the AP?
Correct. Correct. So it's more of a long-term picture of what they're doing, and the, the teachers have to be certified through UConn to be able to teach those classes, and the syllabus is just prescribed by UConn so that they know that it's gonna be up to the standards, that they are gonna roll it in as a, as a direct class, not just as like a transfer credit. At UConn, other schools would be their discretion to what they would do with it. We offer a number of those now, but those are two more that are coming in.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, Lisa. Negotiations, Mark's not here tonight, so we will be starting with teacher negotiations first thing of the fall. E, Facilities, Ricky?
We haven't, we didn't make, meet since the last meeting, but I don't think we did committee reports like the last one. Just a quick summary from the last meeting, I did not attend, but just reviewing the minutes here. Superintendent already covered HVAC and the roof update, which were both discussed at that last meeting. Couple capital closeouts for knee wall. And then we have the driveway repair, which I believe at the last meeting, we looked at a few quotes, but we just wanted a couple more details on those quotes, so we'll be looking at that. Tennis courts, every year seems to be keep on getting expensive to repair, so we're gonna have to look and see what we're gonna do with the tennis courts in the future, if they completely get redone, but that's a town and Board of Ed decision junkie there. Field maintenance, last year we did approve non-ops and funds for a year-round treatment. That way, we don't keep playing catch-up. That's gonna go into effect this fall through Green Machine, won that bid. So we'll start getting annual fertilizers now that we have irrigation and stuff, so we should be able to see year-round good fields instead of just that cycle that was continuous. High school and middle school gym use, a very hot topic, and kind of, I don't think we have it in here, but also with the auditorium, we have a lot of common spaces that get used a lot after school hours, and on the weekends, we're looking at plans to bring in fees for usage to offset, it is an expense rather than, we at least want it to be net zero, so when outside groups are using our facilities, that we're not incurring additional costs because we open the building to the public. There is a posted job for custodian, should be filled by September, and we should have a fee schedule out fairly soon. And hopefully, if that, if we need to use those fees to get outside cleaning services, if we can't do it with custodial help, we will do that, but the whole sharing of the buildings and outside uses is being addressed. And the door grant is being modified to stay within budget, but there is one additional door that did not fall into the grant, and that we have a quote for, and looks like it will be paid from operating. And that is at the high school for the auditorium door. Must be a secured door.
Outside door. Not, not an outside door, it's a, a door that leads into the hallway, into the auditorium.
Okay, the big double?
Nope.
I don't know, okay.
Nope. If I can just make one comment regarding facilities, obviously, it's a great benefit with the annual maintenance of the field, but there's a bit of a downside. We need to find time for the field to rest for about 30 days in our conversations with the company. So that's gonna be challenging for us, not only as just a school team, but also for our towns that are using, in particular, our soccer field. That's gonna be a little bit of a, you know, some work to try and get that. But that's really going to be the solution, is the fertilizer, if we really want to maintain, you know, our fields in, in the best way.
And what is, I'm sorry, what is the 30-day optimum rest period according to?
August, mid-September, 15th.
Yeah, okay.
They want to seed it. They want it off, they can't really seed it, they have to sleep it in the fall.
Yeah.
The latest they could do is second week, they prefer third week in August, and they really want 30 days off. They could do one field this year, and then next year.
Soccer? Yeah.
What fields are they talking about?
Soccer's gonna be the most.
Soccer, yeah, soccer's gonna be a problem for them to do that in the fall.
That's in season.
So they either choose not to do the soccer and do the other ones, or look out, but that's, that's, you know, it has to be off, or it's not worth the money.
Well, that's probably a good idea. If you do the other ones, at least you see how effective it is, because really, I mean, varsity, junior varsity, boys, girls, soccer, travel programs, I mean, we tell the people they can't use the soccer fields for 30 days, and it, it impacts the achievement of the kids, and I don't think we want to do that.
Well, they have to stay out of the softball.
Yeah.
They have to stay out of those fields, too.
We could do that. We could, I think that's something that's manageable and hopefully understandable for people, but in the middle of the season, I don't know, I wish Seymour's not regulation, and Seymour's a small field.
Correct.
That the, I think the town or the soccer association put in, okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna brainstorm a little bit more about a way because.
Because eventually, you're gonna have to do that field.
Correct. So it's always gonna be, you know, so we're gonna work with the company to see if there's the, what other options, you know, we might have. In terms of the high school, it might mean that we shift to the upper field, we might play, you know, away games, you know, for the first, you know, couple weeks of stuff.
And they could practice on the upper.
But you gotta practice.
Well, well, we would, we would do, let's say we did the, let's just say we did the upper field this year, okay? So then our lower field is still available, next, which is the competition field. So next year, lower field gets done, they can practice on the upper field, and then we can schedule away games for the first few. But it, that doesn't solve the issue of our town teams, we would still need to.
Yeah. And practice after, after school, you've got the girls on one field and the guys on the other field, you still need two fields. They always practice on both fields every day.
Yeah. I mean, that's, I think that's workable for a couple weeks.
The town teams, we just have to give advance, as far as advance notice as possible.
Sure, yeah.
But they don't have as much, I mean, we start doing stuff that's a lot more expensive, transportation. They can, there's a lot of fields in that area, but if it's only two weeks, I think we can make it work.
They said 30 days, it's not four weeks.
Oh, it's only two weeks because of the overlap for our school season, but.
Oh, got you, you're saying, okay, I wasn't sure.
It's two weeks for us, because it's gonna be August into that point.
We start in August.
Don't the fall sports start training now?
Start in the middle of August, in the middle.
So I mean, it's still gonna affect those teams for four weeks, it's just the two weeks of actual school. Now, the other teams, like the, the softball, baseball fields, there, is the September in their offseason?
It is. Our softball field is used through the summer, but that'll end at a certain point where I do think we could, you know, work that, let's say, feeding.
Feeding.
Seeding, yes. And the baseball field is not utilized as much, so that would be fine. So it's really, it's really the soccer fields that are going to be a little bit of a puzzle piece to, to work.
So they're telling us mid-August, mid-September this year, or are they saying, they're not locking that in for next year, could they possibly do it earlier next year?
They can't see. You have to see it in the fall.
It's too hot, okay.
And push, they really like 30, they really want third, they could maybe do second, but they really want, prefer the third week in August.
That was a, that was a hot.
That's right, when soccer season starts, unfortunately, that's the problem. We're gonna get, we're, we're gonna get pounded over that. I think Green Machine's got the right idea. They wanted to come, the best time to do it again is late August. I agree with them. But the one advantage we now have is that we put a sprinkler system in, so we should be able to do the baseball and softball fields in the fall and close them, and we should be able to seed the soccer fields in the spring because we now can irrigate it. The biggest problem with planting grass in the spring is it doesn't get water. We now have an irrigation system, and we can do that later. Doing it now, I think is gonna be a waste of money. I think, there's no question, people are gonna go on it on the weekends, we all know that. They're, they're going to use the fields, and they should use the fields. It's soccer season, that's my only thought. Unfortunately, in East Granby, we have nowhere else to go.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry about, so you're, you're suggesting that we hold off on doing soccer fields?
Just soccer fields, baseball, softball.
And have we gotten, I mean, would they confirm, would Green Machine confirm that, even though late summer is the optimum time, would they confirm?
I'll go back and ask them.
Yeah, they'd take a.
It was for doing it in. Spring seeding?
There's a lot of spring seeding going on, but the problem is with spring seeding is, come June and July, if you're not watering it regularly, that new grass is gonna die. Fortunately, we have now an irrigation system, which would help with that. Soccer, though, you know, soccer's big in, in every town, and I would hate to be involved with telling people that we close the soccer fields.
It would be, it would be very difficult.
Yeah.
As someone who is coached in town and traveled, it would be very difficult.
There's a field at Seymour, but it's a small field.
You know, you might have to go out of town for a couple weeks.
That upper field gets incredible usage.
Yeah, well, they practice on it every single day, right now, every single night.
And it's multiple games a week.
Yeah.
Plus our PE classes.
Plus PE classes.
So we will try and find some options, even if we stagger, if, if spring works, I'm not a field expert, I defer to the experts on this, but if spring's possible, then we, if we do one field this spring, and then maybe one next spring, so we always have at least one field open. But we, we've been talking about this for a very long time, and, you know, we've, we're going to make the investment, and it's not an inexpensive investment, you know, and it is, you know, used all the time by our children in, in town, whether it's the school or, or the community, so, you know.
Absolutely. We just don't delay maintenance so long.
Correct.
But I agree, yeah, we don't want to delay, we don't want to delay, we want to get it started. And if we can get it started on the baseball and softball, and, and know that we're gonna do the soccer, I think people will be happy, and I think they'll all look better. I mean, that's, that's our goal, that's what we're trying to do. I just think the third week in August, again, is just gonna be problems for everyone. I just don't see anyone being happy about it, when those are the only two fields we have. So that, that'll work out. It'll work out. I'm glad we're making progress with it. Ricky, one thing I think we, we may want to do, though, is, we need to meet with the town over the field maintenance. There's been some back and forth on what they do and what we do, and I'm not sure if any of us are real clear on it. I thought that the board voted last week to go and do the extra things. I thought the town had a management or some sort of service plan on the fields. Missy, is that true? In the past, I thought they'd been fertilizing them and stuff. I thought we were looking to go organic or do some extra things to make sure it gets done. I'm not looking to take over, you know, become the parking wreck director.
I know, I know, they mow them. I don't know what in terms of.
In the past, they always fertilized them because we didn't pay for it. You know, I worked there, we, the town took care of them all the time.
I think Ray knows.
I can tell you.
Ray will tell us, that's right, Ray's still here.
It's called the lawn company, and they just come twice a year to feed it. That's it.
But the town's paying for that.
So if, when you change over to Green Machine, we should be telling the town that there's funds at work, the town is paying, right?
Well, that, that's my thought, is, I don't want to take over their funding.
The town also pays for the infield maintenance.
Right, correct.
Paying for that, and the town does the cutting and the cleanup.
Mm-hmm.
That's where we are right now. I don't have figures.
And that's a good place to be, because we're certainly not in the lawn care business, and, you know, we, we want to be in the education business, so I'm glad you clarified that. But I, I think we need to talk about clarification of, you know, who's gonna be doing what, because I don't mind us spending money to enhance it, but not in duplication or not wasting money if the town is doing something and we're doing the same.
I think a lot of the stuff that, because I talk to them a lot, and I looked at with Green Machine, it's a different application, because what the lawn company does is what we're limited to because of the middle school age kids that are up there. We can only use certain stuff on the fields. So the lawn company is just basically, I would say they'll probably keep doing that, but what Green Machine's doing is, it's not only different chemicals to get rid of weeds and get rid of grubs, they're gonna aerate, oversee, top dress. So that's why it's extremely more expensive than what we're paying.
Okay, thank you for clarification, appreciate it. Okay.
I had one quick question, Ricky, for the fee schedule that you mentioned may be coming. Is there a model in there for like security deposits and stuff, so when somebody comes in and they don't clean up, they don't get their deposit back?
That's been discussed, yes. Yep.
That'll be helpful. They'll be more apt to clean up if they've paid a security deposit.
All accountability.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, Ricky. Communications.
Later, we'll be bringing up the social media. Other things that we've been talking about in communications are leveraging the new platform that the school is using, communications platform. We want to have a shared calendar mechanism. The app is great. That, that has been released, and we can add meetings to our, our calendars. We're looking for a mechanism to be able to subscribe to future meetings. So be it for us, for committee meetings, for elect votes, not elections, but budget votes, future board meetings. It allows not only us, but community members to subscribe and just get the word out there that, that we're here and we're willing to listen. So I have a message to Mr. Moser to discuss what we can and can't do with that. That's, that's one of the things we're working on.
Very good. Thank you, Drew. Okay, item five, recommended actions. I get a motion to appoint Sarah Kleiman to serve as a Southfield Regional Agri Science Center Consulting Committee representing East Granby. Lisa, make the motion. Lynn, was that a second?
Yes.
Any discussion questions, Anna?
Not replacing me. That would be in addition to myself replacing Mr. Corcoran, who has, was, John Corcoran was the long-serving other appointee to the agri science. And each school district that sends students to the Southfield Agri Science Program is requested and perhaps even required by the state to have representatives.
It's a state regulation.
And they have at least two, yes.
Has John been active recently? John Corcoran?
No, he's been unable. It's, they, we also meet at night. So, so this is, Mr. Kleiman was serving in a temporary basis.
Mister.
Mister Kleiman. Mrs. Kleiman is also a parent of a student that is attending there. And given her involvement with East Granby's school system and understanding those things and, and her, so the advisory committee is looking to bring to the agri science program, like, what professionals need to know to be going into agri science things. And the agri science program is not just cows and plows, as they like to say, too. It's environmental education. It's business technology. It's agribusiness. It's welding. It's construction and all sorts of other things like that. So they, they look to have a well-rounded group of advisors to make sure that the things that they're teaching in the school are relevant to what the students might be interested in pursuing in their professional life. So they try and get a, a breadth of advisors in order to do that.
Oh, good. Good, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signifying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Item B, approved capital request to the Board of Finance of parking lot repairs. You got a motion?
You can do a motion second.
Yeah, we'll discuss it after the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the capital request to the Board of Finance for parking lot repairs.
Okay, John with the motion or the second?
I'll take it.
Okay, Lynn with the second. Discussion or questions?
Wasn't there a discrepancy in costs that we, it wasn't quite clear in the two?
The measurements.
The measure, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you. I, I asked Mr. Carlson to come this evening to give some additional information. So again, just to refresh our memories, this is one of our capital items that we will be requesting to the Board of Finance on June 17th at their meeting. And it is to repair some of the cracks in our driveways and our parking lots. So.
Well, it's high asphalt, too. You see it on the roads. They dribble the hot tar into the cracks. That's all it is. I got three quotes. The crack man never responded to me. I got one from AFAS, and I got one from North East Coast pavement. East Coast took Ariel or they just went aerial photographs, and they went with their original that they did. They did it five years ago when they did everything. And that's what they did. AFAS actually did a site visit with me. Because we're just, we're actually just doing the spots that need to be done. We're not charging. If, if I got a crack that doesn't need to be done, we're not gonna do it. It doesn't need to be done. That's where the discrepancy is. So AFAS fell within our budget. I would say that the higher one, there's no need for that at this point at all.
And AFAS is the lowest one, and they're, they're a local company too?
Yes. And they, I actually met with them out on site. So I know what's going on. The other ones were just generic. Here's a price for you.
Yeah, I saw them back in, the day after our last meeting. Then I was over at the, and I saw the truck again. I'm like, that was quick.
Yeah, we just weren't sure if we were missing something.
No. Because you can see the difference in the linear feet that.
Yeah, yeah. It was a huge difference.
They had all of them. We're just charging linear foot of what needs to be repaired.
You made sense to it, because we noticed there's a huge difference in, what did you, okay.
But there was a minor, which, when you calculate out the per linear feet, it didn't match up. But it was close, so, close enough for government mark, I suppose.
Ray, AFL?
Yeah, both of them. When you actually did the math for one of your feet, it wasn't the same per foot for each section. I was like, but they were close.
So if we're looking at about 2,500 roughly for Seymour and All Grove for approximately 5,000, then another 3,700 for the middle school and high school. So if we did an amount, it's nine, I might suggest or recommend that we do an amount not to exceed $10,000 for the crack repairs at all of our schools. And then obviously, any unused funds will be returned to the town. Mr. Carlson's 10,000 sound reasonable?
Yes.
Does somebody want to rephrase the motion?
We haven't got to the motion, then?
We may withdraw the prior motion.
Let him withdraw. Give him the one, John. It'd be easier that way.
I'll just make another motion here. Approve capital request to Board of Finance parking lot repairs on the amount not to exceed $10,000.
Second.
Second from Lynn. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll call vote. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously again. Thank you. Item C, approve facilities item repair needs. Steam traps at All Grove Middle School, High School HVAC. Ray, is this back to Ray?
Yeah. At All Grove, it's the steam traps in the basement. They have a facility over there with a big giant steam boiler that makes steam for a few of the areas that are still steam radiators. And then it turns the rest of it back into hot water for the newer stuff. The steam traps are failing, which allows the steam to just flow through and dump into the basement under the stage. That's where the emergency relief is. So it just flows right through, which creates a rather humid place for all the electronics and the electricity. So the number that I had put down was a budget number. I'm still working on getting prices. Because it's gonna be in the $7,000, $8,000 for repairs. So I'm still working on getting final pricing on that and different. And the problem with the HPC, the high schools got nothing to do with the project, what we're doing. We had a secondary compressor fail on one of the rooftop units. And once again, the one cost that I got in was like $12,000 for that. But I'm working to get better pricing.
Okay, so are we gonna pass on that, then?
Well, I would, I'd, if you want to throw some numbers to, to hold it, or if we don't have to do that yet, I would just put that off till the next meeting. Hopefully, I can have some.
Well, here, here's my, my comment. This is not capital. So the request would be operating first, and then if needed, non-lapsing. Based on these amounts and with current work being done, if we can secure lower, we could wait. Or I would ask the board to approve a motion not to exceed 8,000 for steam traps and 12,000 to repair the HVAC through operating and/or non-lapsing funds. Unless you want to wait. Ray, what's the, are we able to wait another month?
Yes.
Okay. So leave it up to the board to decide if you want to wait another month, then if we get additional quotes.
Exactly. We could get the purchase order.
Oh.
This year.
Thank you, thank you.
If you have it now.
We're ending our fiscal year. So if we can do the purchase by the end of this fiscal year, thank you, Mrs. Heine, that would be optimal.
That, that would be. So my, my question will be, do, do you feel, Mary, we're gonna be able to end this year where we'll be in the black and we'd be able to afford doing this? That's my only question. We're only a few more weeks of school. And I'm, and I would be in favor of somebody making a motion for that?
I will make a motion to approve the facility item repair for the steam traps not to exceed $8,000 at All Grove and for the replacement of the secondary compression, is that right?
Compressor.
Compressor. The secondary compressor on the roof of the middle school, high school HVAC system not to exceed $12,000.
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions from the board?
How old are they, the steam traps?
How old's the school?
Good, good.
Their original.
Wow.
They served us well.
And we couldn't, they made.
And the amount, the amount you gave is for a repair?
That's what my father-in-law maintains, that when he went there 75 years ago, it was a bomb shelter underneath the, the stage, and they had to, like, practice aerate drills. I've heard that rumor before.
The amount, the amount is for repair?
It's for, to replace those steam traps.
Replace completely, okay.
Good. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Item D, approve May 2025 financials. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the May 2025 financials.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
I'll second the.
Second by John. Okay. Mary?
Okay, we are, we are anticipating an additional reimbursement from state for excess cost. As we stated last month, we already received $227,745. And we hope to receive more this week and our additional next week. So we should.
Thank you, Ricky. Sorry, Mike.
Nope, that's okay. And then we're also, we're expecting reimbursement from Hartford Public Schools for our choice program students. That should come in by the end of the week. So I've been on top of them, but they haven't gotten back to me yet. Items to the financials, nothing really changed from last month, except for, the same ones are still over. They're planning 111 certified personnel, still trending over, because we've already started moving our staff that remove for our next fiscal year budget. The non-certified personnel's over, but once we get the reimbursement from Hartford, we will, that should be okay. The new one is 121 certified substitutes. This lines our budget due to substitute coverage for certified personnel for feeling the time medically. Keep in mind, remember next year, we actually increased this budget, because our budget was always too low compared to actual. So we should be good next year. Professional services, the same as last month. They reflect increased costs related to student support services. And once we get more excess costs, we'll offset that. A new one this month is our contracted maintenance. Overages here reflect unanticipated repairs and maintenance at both Seymour and Middle High School. It's, as you know, repairs, we can't predict those. So we're actually over and out this year. People transportation, this line's also trending over due to the need to port additional band related to student support services. 561, 563 are the public and private school tuition. And again, once we get excess costs, we will apply it there. Custodial supplies is trending slightly over due to increasing custodial supplies. It's everything pretty much is going on. And object 10, membership and special programs. Again, a few memberships this year has increased from last year. So that's just trending a little bit over. Any questions on the button?
Yeah, well, the, the fee schedule that we're talking about for the usage of the facilities offsets some of those custodial supplies as well?
It could.
Okay.
Well, we don't have it yet. So, not for this month.
We would have to then, we would have to determine how to stay used.
I mean, it.
It's a supply issue, too, though.
It is. I mean, when we look at the, the building use, it, it might seem a little trivial. But when, like, we don't, I'll give you an example. We don't budget necessarily for trash removal of our dumpsters in the summertime. Previously, we need to now. You know, we don't, we don't stock our toilet paper and our paper towels as much. We're having to do it more. Again, it sounds trivial. It doesn't matter to me. It's all of our community using, you know, it's just a matter of it needs to be paid for out of something. So.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the May 2025 financials, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Item C, approve social media communications. Or I get a motion worded some other way if you wish. Drew, you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do you know what you want better than I do?
I'd like to make a motion to approve exploration of creating a social media channel, page on Facebook.
Do they need a motion?
To communicate.
To, oh, to, to share communications on behalf of the Board of Education.
Specifically on, okay, it doesn't need to be in the motion.
To create?
To create a Facebook page.
To create, because we do not have a social media presence at the moment. So creating a social media presence on Facebook for Board of Ed Communications.
Not official.
Now, it's informational. It's not back and forth. It's not question, but it's just informational. Okay?
So do we want to discuss? Is that, is that a motion? So we need, that's a motion?
The motion's for a discussion.
Motion just, do we need a motion for discussion?
Do we?
I don't think we do.
Well, if the, if the motion involves the creation.
Yeah.
Then we would need a motion.
Okay. So motion to create a social media Facebook account for the Board of Education to, to have communications with the community.
Okay. There's a second for that.
I'll second.
Okay, Lynn with a second. Okay, other discussion or questions, Anna?
So what do you?
So.
So let me, let me explain a little bit.
No, he asked a question.
Jumped right in front of me.
And I'll start, I'll start you, Drew.
Okay.
So what's, what, what would be the difference from how we're currently communicating with the community?
Recognizing that in today's world, everyone gets their news, their updates, their meeting invites, all that in different ways. And social media has a very big presence in, not only in our community, but everywhere. We felt it was time to create a Board of Education Facebook page that does not replace any mechanism we communicate today. It doesn't post meeting minutes. It doesn't have anything. It's, all it is is a direct, a direction. It's for making an announcement that we're having a Board of Ed meeting. It's for making an announcement, maybe that we've hired a superintendent or the surveys, the superintendent search committee. Those types of communications are out there. We communicate that already through email and other vehicles. But we figured this additional vehicle is just one more way for people to, to be in the know and have that opportunity to be a part of the discussion. We also thought it would be nice to have, some of us are, are products of the 80s, the more you know, kind of informational, hey, did you know this is what the Board of Education does? Meet your Board of Education members. And we did note that we would do that outside of any election type times. But get to know your, your members of the Board of Education. So really, it's about us. If something was going on in the school, this would not replace anything, any superintendent communications, any of that. It's really just about Board of Ed, understanding what we do, and giving an avenue for where to find our minutes, where to find our budget information, where to find policies, who to contact should you need help, which is usually not the Board of Ed. It's just by at least publicizing the, the chain of communication. So that's the spirit of where we're coming from.
Well, is it truly communication now? Because you said it's not intended to be a two-way street.
More noticing.
Yeah, it's informative.
So again, seems to me that if we're doing that, never mind.
Just to try and offer a different forum for people to get those kinds of notifications.
And you're choosing Facebook on, rather than other social media.
Because we're not thinking that it's.
Sites.
Right. So they're, like, Instagram is about photos. We're not, we're not planning on, in doing a whole bunch of photos.
Correct.
In terms of frequency of posts, we were, like, I think maximum once a week.
Yep, yep.
Of just, just to have a place there to tell people how to get that kind of information. Just for this, like, any business right now, you can't run a business if you don't have a webpage. Do you expect that person to go to that webpage, she'll learn everything about your business? No. I mean, we have a webpage for the, the schools. But we, there's, there have to be different ways that people can kind of figure out how to get the information. The point is not to usurp any of the other previous or other already established modes of communication, but just to have one more avenue that people can figure out what the board does or doesn't do and should or.
And so you're putting this on the Communication Subcommittee of the Board of Education?
Correct.
Yes.
And there would be multiple people that would control the login. And we were also saying that you would have to have, if there's three members standing on the communication, all three would need to proofread anything before it goes up.
I would think that you would need to clear everything from, from the board en masse, I would think.
We would, um.
Because if you're post, if you're posting something that's not a schedule or time or event, or if you're. or event, or if you're posting something that's remotely close to a policy or anything that smells of decision-making, then it would need to have gone to the entire Board, wouldn't it?
Correct, and we did talk about for some messaging, especially the informative, we could pre-schedule, so we could have 10 posts that are scheduled to release once a week or whatnot, that we could pre, get pre-approval from the Board. And also to answer your question, John, why just Facebook, we researched a lot of other surrounding towns, who do utilize some of the other platforms and, like Lisa.
Platforms, that was the word.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So it's, they just, we're not posting pictures or anything, so.
I did just learn.
You know where I'm concerned, right? Everyone, everyone knows where I'm concerned, right?
Having it come across as being some sort of official Board policy or decision-making body.
The next thing you know, it's a back and forth.
Yeah, I, I mean, people will leave comments, right?
I think we need that, like, we need a home.
You could disable comments.
It's already, you know, it's already out there on East Granby, you know, page or whatever, it's, whatever other pages are out there that people want to slam, get local.
I think we would disable comments, we would not respond, you know, if you need, we make channels, we'd make a mechanism of here's the rules of the road. From the approval of the messages getting posted to the rules of, you know, if something backfires and people start getting very chatty, like we're saying.
If somebody uses Messenger, you can actually put on an auto reply saying, for official correspondence, please email, you can give the Board of Ed address. That way it's on record. Do you have any precedents of other districts that we could look at? Any, I was trying to find some, but I haven't found many Board of Ed.
We are looking at Ellington, I believe.
Ellington, correct.
Just see, see how they run it and how it looks.
Talon has one that Superintendent runs for the Board of Ed, that they post on Facebook.
Okay.
A Superintendent?
What's the difference between the school district?
Everything goes through Superintendent's, so nothing gets posted from any school, so it doesn't, it doesn't come from the Board of Education. It comes from. Board of Education dues it, they're publishing.
There's already an East Granby school district group, right? Or it's a high school?
It's a high school.
Yeah, yeah.
And high school does a phenomenal job, I mean, to be honest with you, I know more about what's going on at the high school because, and I'm only involved with Facebook so that I know what's going around, I don't post anything, but it is informative and I think we've been very transparent, I think we've put out lots of information. This makes us look a little more proactive than when it comes from us. I can see where we can have some issues with it, but it is proactive that we're putting it out. One example was.
I'm sorry, the high school's already?
The high school's been doing it for years.
Okay, and are they communicating back and forth?
I don't know what they're doing.
They, they do a lot.
I don't think they take comments, I don't think there's any comments.
They don't take comments, they have comments, and they're responding, okay.
I don't know what they're doing.
But Bob just proves the whole purpose of it, he's consuming his information from a Facebook group.
Yeah.
So two years ago, I think there was a virtual conference from CAE that was talking about social media communications through the Board of Education, specifically whether or not people should get involved in doing things like this. And one of the recommendations was to post information only, to not back, not go back and forth with people about it, but also not to disable comments because usually, if you're worried about people being inflammatory, usually there's enough people that have cooler heads that will actually respond in with a sensible response so that it actually, I mean, this was the professional out of Boston that was the communications director for Boston Public Schools.
At the Board's page, you'll have communication from.
To.
No, you're making the post, and you're not, you're not as the Board going back and forth with people.
But there'll be posts from people going back and forth.
There could be, yes, that is true. So I think you would need to still maintain the discretion of shutting something down if it becomes counterproductive. I don't know who would make that decision, that would have to be decided.
Yep, and that was one point too that we brought up in the past, I think we may have tried it, and there was only one person who had the account and everything. The Communication Committee is, as I say, all three of us manage Facebook pages already. We have experience and we would.
And to that end, you can only post 29 days in advance.
Yeah, so we would, we would have mechanisms in place.
You can only schedule them.
It's not one person in control of it all.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't know if we're ready to create it yet, but maybe if we had a kind of written of what's, what will be laid out, what the moderation will be. Yep. That way we can all see what the settings will be and.
I think that was kind of the point of bringing it up tonight, is to, like, what's the temperature of people?
We don't want to go down the rabbit hole if it's.
If it's not, if it's.
And you did.
Unilaterally, you know, nobody wants it, or.
You did say initially you'd share it with the Board before you posted it to just get.
Absolutely.
Comfortable with that, then after a while, I think more or less to be comfortable with it.
I don't think we need to vote if we're not creating it yet, right? It was just a discussion?
I would say that, I would say that we would table it until we have more information.
I'm sorry, Lisa, how did, how did the motion go down?
Well, at first it was an explanation and then it turned into approve to create.
Right.
Yeah, it was approved to create, yeah.
Well, how about create but not distribute without Board permission?
There you go. Build the vehicle.
No, Lisa, we don't want to tie you guys up so you can't do what you want to do.
I thought you were just asking for like a prototype in writing.
They can create it and just not publish it.
Yeah.
Yep, so we could do that, we could, we could allow creation but not publication, public, to make it public yet until reviewed.
The Jan 30th?
We made the motion, do they want to amend that? Yeah, I made the motion. So, can I amend them?
Go ahead.
I'd like to amend the motion to create a Facebook Board of Ed, a Facebook page that's meant to be for communications on behalf of Board of Education, to create it but do, but not to publish it until we have Board of Ed approval.
There's a second for that.
I'll second.
Leave it with a second.
And again, I'll ask the question, how does that, how is that different from what we currently do?
Also, the East Granby, East Granby government does post our minutes and stuff. I think we're just making it more, because that kind of does get buried, so if people are really interested, they can subscribe to that page only.
So, right, so.
Depending on your algorithm.
So I go to the East Granby Board of Education site.
Yeah.
And I try to find that information and, yeah, I'm good with getting minutes, I'm good with getting agendas, thank you. I'm not good getting much else, I'm not able to find my way to, you know, what the sports schedules are, I have to go to other sites to find that. So are we updating, are we updating globally our current website? Or should we blow that up and replace this with whatever you want to do?
It's all, it's. It's all going to point back to the same place, it's.
That's where we're going to have.
Depends where you're.
We don't have anything right now, John.
You don't?
You know, I give, I commend people who are posting things for us, especially in our superintendent's search, otherwise we would have, we would have had posted nothing.
And that's a prime example, we've received emails and stuff, but there's not really any social media communication of that for people who aren't plugged in and subscribe to the mailing list. It's basically, it's like for the people who come into this building through that door all the time, and there's other people who don't even know that door exists, and we're going to put one right behind Mary. Oh, there you go, we're adding another door to get to the information, we're not moving the information in any way, we're just adding a new avenue to get to it. Selective spoon feeding. Yes. When somebody says, I did not know, this will be one more reason why they should. I'm guilty, I mean, I probably have like nine inboxes for the things I'm on and sometimes I just get buried, so if something's really important, you subscribe to it, even though I have the access, I got an email about it, by the time I see it, it's tomorrow night or something, whereas if you subscribe to something, you can set it, so I get a push notification and that I will see, like, as it comes out. So I get it, just one more mechanism to give the same information that's already there. It's not a ton of effort on our part because we're not recreating it, we're just pointing, hey, FYI, those meeting minutes are over here.
If you search on Facebook, if you do a CT Board of Education search, you'll see a few that come up and you could, it might be worth looking at them, some have nothing more than snow day than parroting what comes out, you know, with snow day, and then some have a little bit more of it.
And, you know, we, the goal would not be to be the official notification of snow days either, like, and I, I hear what you're saying, John, like, what's the point when it's out there in so many other ways that it might be more complete? I, I do hear that.
Haven't you seen mediocrity? We got to make our way.
You know, I just look at what strictly Board of Education information that we're giving, it's appropriate, because again, the superintendent's search is an example where we can be putting out information to get more people to participate, because I'm sure any different people are going to say, it's always the excuse, I didn't know. And, and it's hard to believe that somebody's going to say, did you put it on Facebook? But that's what somebody would say, and, you know, it's something I guess we could, I don't want to do it, it's not the thing I do, but it's, I think it has value, people get their news from Facebook, hard to believe, but they do. But I certainly don't want us getting involved with what the schools do and, yeah, snow days and things like that, that's, we don't want to get involved with the superintendent's business and.
And that was part of the discussion too, we don't want to set expectations with things by posting school day or a meeting minute or something, and now people are, are depending on that, we don't want to create anything new where they're depending on the information, we're just kind of posting, it's just that extra channel. And there are, to your point, there are a lot of people who like to share information on Facebook and some of the community pages, so now it just gives us that backing, they can take what we post and share it as they see fit.
Okay, any other questions or comments? And I'll call a vote, all those in favor of the motion, and read the motion again so we know exactly what we're voting on? Lisa, please?
Create a Facebook page, approve to create a Facebook page to communicate on behalf of the BOE to create but not to publish the BOE before the BOE approves.
You guys comfortable with that motion?
Yep.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions, motion carried, one of, one, was that an abstention, John, or no?
No.
One no by John Welsh, motion carries, thank you. Item six, agenda items for future meetings, we've got elementary enrollment, we're keeping a close eye on, and girls' golf team for spring 2026.
That is correct, so elementary enrollment, just a quick comment about both. I've checked in with the principals and secretaries about a week and a half ago, and as of right now, there's no substantial change in any of our enrollment numbers, so keeping an eye on that. Girls' golf team for spring 2026, Mrs. Diaz and, Diaz, sorry, Mrs. Diaz and Mr. DeMello will come to the Board with information regarding the future of a girls' varsity golf team.
Is there one at all now?
As far as.
And that is spring sport, you see?
I'm sorry?
That is spring sport.
It is spring for girls, correct.
What's the date?
It's co-ed right now.
Right, right, well aware.
What's the requirement for CIAC as far as declaring for a spring?
There's plenty of time for that.
I just, what's?
I don't know the exact date.
Okay.
Here's the crazy, okay? So we have a co-ed team.
Okay.
Right? And our young ladies are playing from the same tees as our young men. CIAC.
They couldn't let them play.
CIAC, come on.
You mean, when it's a girl's season and they pulled them, they always play from them?
Because we're a co-ed team, because we're a co-ed team. We're playing, as a co-ed team, we're playing other boys' teams. And therefore, our female players have to play from the regulation, if you will, or the men's teams. I think it's absurd.
So you think it's what?
Absurd.
Oh, yeah, that sounds absurd.
Absolutely.
So that'll be an upcoming agenda item.
Okay.
Supporting girls' golf.
Item seven, comments from visitors, good evening, you have comments?
I don't know if I should stand, but I will, it makes me feel secure.
Do you want to get the podium?
No, so my name is Amanda Copeland, I am the CEO of Camp Copeland, I have a 19-year-old, a 15-year-old, a 13-year-old, all here in East Granby. On behalf of my daughter Cece Copeland, who is a 10th grader, she asked when she was in eighth grade that we had six girls moving up to high school who wanted to play golf. We told the athletic director, he moved it up the chain, got shot down. My daughter told me, muzzle it, Mom, let me have some fun. This year, she's now in 10th grade, she plays in a match, forced to play from the blue tees. If anyone knows anything about golf, there are four different colored tees, the red ones are called the ladies' tees. My daughter and her eight other girlfriends who play on this boys' team, it's not a co-ed team.
Right.
It's a boys' team, it's listed at CIAC as a boys' team, must play from the blue tees. So my daughter, and we all know that men and women are different on how they hit the ball, basketball, track, whatever, they're different genders, different strengths, okay? She's forced to play from the blue tees, she earns an extra stroke on every single hole, so she is nine strokes over whatever her score is going to be, okay? We want to make sure that these girls have an equal opportunity to participate in athletics and are treated equally in the terms of benefits, opportunities, and scholarships. We also want to know that there are 63 girls' teams in Connecticut. Parent asked me, why don't you guys co-op with another team? Oh, guess what, East Granby can't because we have eight girls, we have a two foursome. I was told by members of Board of Education, the school district, la da 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 da, we need a two-year sustainability. We asked in May of 2023, we are now May of 2025, that's your two-year. I have already asked for grants to raise funds to get these girls the, the money we need for coach, we have two parents willing to volunteer their time to coach them, I am also looking into Airways and Copper Hill to get them the time for the tees and things of that nature. The, you need to make this happen for these girls, do not fail these young ladies. I've already reached out to the Women's Equality out of Washington DC to make sure that we are not in violation of Title IX, but you cannot fail these young ladies again. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Copeland, I have a question for you, you said it went up the line and you said Board of Education, could you tell when the Board of Education, because I've been around for a few years, I don't ever recall any discussion of a girls' golf team.
It went to the athletic director, and again, my daughter at the time in ninth grade asked me to muzzle it. In 10th grade, she was in that match with the blue tees, and that's when you guys all got the emails. And I've reached out to other people to make this happen.
Okay, well, my thing was when you said the Board of Education, because we've never discussed it, I just want to be clear on, I certainly think things like this are terrific ideas, but I guess I understand now, it is a boys' team, so I guess that's why CIAC's saying if the girls are going to play in a boys' team, they have to play from.
Which is wrong.
Those colors, which.
Which is wrong.
Well, if you're competing against, if, if, John, if I'm going to play baseball, if I'm a girl playing baseball and they can, I'm going to face fast pitching.
That's true.
Okay? If I'm, there are girls can play soccer, they can play hockey on boys' hockey teams in Connecticut and they play by the boys' rules, that's the way CIAC does it. We have a, we've had a boys' golf team here forever, I'm glad to see that there's an interest in girls. The comment about sustainability, I know CIAC's concerned about, but it seems like we have the numbers here, but, I mean, it never came to us to say no about it, I think something like this is a terrific idea. I commend the coach for even taking them on, because it is a boys' team and the girls are playing on it.
Well, it's my understanding there aren't enough young men participating.
No, we've had them turned away.
Is that true?
Yes.
Well, I don't know, we've had men turned away.
We've had cuts.
Yeah, they had cuts this year at least.
This year.
I can't answer for what the coach did.
There's just a big turnout for golf, which is great that we have a turnout.
Well, I think it's terrific, and I'm glad that you brought it up, and I think it's something we want to look into. We certainly want to be able to have programs for girls and boys, and I think something like golf, I'm not a golfer, don't like it at all, but I, but I think it's a lifetime skill that I see lots of people my age doing. I do other things, but I think it's important because I see a lot of what we do in high school are not lifetime skills. So I'm in favor of it, but we are, you know, budget-minded and we are, have restraints, and I appreciate the effort you're doing. And I don't mean to pop balloons, but CIAC is not going to let volunteers coach a team. They've got to be certified coaches in the state of Connecticut to coach a high school team. Unfortunately, it makes it a little more difficult.
Let us know what the requirements are, and me and the other parent, we will do that.
The athletic director can, yeah, give specific requirements. It's, it's not difficult. It takes some time. You have to take a couple courses, but people do do it. But just to know, because I've had a lot of people, you know, over the years would like to volunteer, great people. I mean, Gina Oriama's not qualified to coach basketball at East Granby High School or any high school in Connecticut because he doesn't have a high school certification. So it shows you what.
We had also asked, there's fun sitting between cheerleading and color guard.
Well, those monies we spent elsewhere, that just doesn't sit there. We haven't had color guard and cheerleading in years.
Showing on your budget numbers that you still have those salaries.
It shows, it shows those salaries, but we're not paying those salaries now, and we haven't been doing that for quite a while. So those are money, we, we'd have to get more money. We don't have that just sit, I wish we had it just sitting there because then I'd say, let's just move it to golf.
But I thought it showed as the 25, 26, the salaries for cheerleading and color guard.
They're all listed, they're all listed there, yes, but we don't fund all of those. There are things there that are listed, we haven't funded in years because we didn't have the money for it. And that's one of the items, you know, as we've made cuts over the years, those things don't change because they're part of our contract.
We don't, we don't, we don't drop them.
We don't drop that stuff. That stays there.
We drop them from the contracts, it's very difficult to do, one, in terms of negotiating with the unions. It's difficult to drop either a stipend or a coaching contract.
There's, let's just say it's 2,500 for cheerleading.
It's impossible, it's impossible to negotiate to drop something like that with reason, reason. It's reasonable because what if it reappears? And you've dropped it from the contract, it doesn't exist, right?
Then you got to negotiate the salary.
Then you got to, then you got to negotiate from square one, you got to recreate, you got to...
Like we're doing right now for golf.
Which presumably we would be doing for golf.
Okay, so color guard hasn't been around since 2018, and that salary's 2,500. So are you banking 2,500 from 19, 20, 21 till it's gone? You don't have it in there.
It was never funded because the position...
So where's that money then?
There, there was no money. It wasn't funded, it wasn't funded, it wasn't funded. But the position exists because the position existed in the negotiated contracts.
We want to make this happen for the girls, that's all.
And we've had to make cuts over the year. Those are things, if you make a cut, we don't cut that number out in case the following year we bring it back in. You didn't want to start with it.
Are the, the eight girls, what?
Six are sophomores, two are juniors, and I believe we have one eighth grader coming up, and we could get two more juniors back. So you would have eight, 10, 11 girls for the 2026 year.
I like the idea. Now, I'm thinking, now you've got people who want to, want to coach.
We have two parents that are ready to step up.
Well, they can't unless they're certified and get hired.
We actually asked.
But here's, here's my thought. Here, here's, I'm trying to develop this program even, even further. They can, if they contact Park and Rec, they can do, one thing we'd like to see for sustainability is we'd like to see programs which we've cut in the past. There's nothing in the middle school. So for sustainability, if we could get somebody that would do through Park and Rec or through the school, come in and do a golf club for seventh and eighth grade girls, that helps the following year that we have sustainability. Otherwise, it looks like it's a one-shot deal, and if it doesn't have sustainability, it's difficult.
Are there any local junior leagues?
Yes.
That we can, that we can pull?
And there are a lot of young ladies that participate in the PGA Junior League. There's teams, I mean, if we... There's teams at Copper Hill, there's teams, I can give you the whole list, but...
If we see names, if we can pull East Granby students who are in the junior leagues that can kind of show sustainability, at least interest in the, I mean, it's ammunition.
No, it's, it, it's out there, folks. It's out there.
Do you know where they play? I'm all for, we just got wickets to meet, so.
I appreciate you coming. I'm going to, I'm going to cut the comments out because usually we don't do this Q and A, but I did want to...
I apologize.
No, no, I wanted to respond to you and wanted to have a little discussion.
Because I'm not going to stop.
It's okay. And we appreciate you looking, help us get funding because that's what's, that's what's needed. That's what's needed. Okay, do I have a motion for, any other comments?
I'm moving to German, is that what you're looking for?
Motion for German? By John, second.
I'll say through.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meetings adjourned, 8:15. Thank you all for coming.